Call our meeting to order, we'll wait for Susan here. Ready? All right, we'll call a meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A move that we approve the agenda as presented.
All right, is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. Oh, Julie?
Ms. Bruce, that?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Motion passes, we'll move on. The first meeting in January, we begin with an organizational meeting and the organizational meeting is not the district organizational meeting that we have mid-year, but the board organizational meeting where we name determine officers and committee assignments for the year. And you've all received something on this and so we'll begin the process. First, asking for nominations for president.
I would move to nominate Mr. Jim Weeman for the position of president. Thank you.
All right, are there other nominations? All right, hearing none. I guess we, do we move forward with the roll call, Julie?
Jim, you just have to accept the nomination.
I will accept it.
All right, and then we can do a roll call. Oh, yeah, you know what? We were supposed to do the swearing in first.
Yes, let's, let's back up.
Okay, yeah.
Let's get some official board members. All right, so let's begin with the swearing in.
All right, so we have four elected board members that we will swear in, Susan and Burgett and Scott and Danielle. So if you would, please repeat after me. I, with your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I, for Miss McQuiston.
Danielle Berset. Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Lake Orion Community Schools, Lake Orion, Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of Lake Orion Community Schools, Lake Orion, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, so that was, that was definitely awkward, but the best way to do it is, we appreciate you going through.
And we have done it in person before, so we, we've already been covered. So first of all, welcome to our newest board members, Danielle and Susan, and welcome back to our veteran board members and, and with this new team, I'm expecting some great things. All right, so that moves us to nominations. All right, so Julie, we'll pick up where we left off. There are no nominations and I accept the nomination.
All right, so Ms. Berset?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. All right, we'll move along to nominations for vice president.
As for vice president, I wish to nominate Ms. Forget McQuiston for the position of vice president.
Okay, are there other nominations? Other nominations? Burgett, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, Julie, please.
Ms. Berset?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer? I didn't hear you, Jake, you're on mute.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. Weeman?
Yes. All right, thank you for serving in that role, Burgett. We'll move on to nominations for secretary.
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Stephen Draco's to be our secretary this year.
Okay, thank you. Are there other nominations? Other nominations? All right, hearing none, Steve, are you willing to accept that nomination?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, Julie.
Ms. Berset?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Thank you, Steve, for serving in that role. And we'll move on to treasurer and are there any nominations for treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Jake Singer to remain our treasurer.
All right, thank you. Other options, other nominations, any others? Okay, Jake, willing to continue in that role?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Julie.
Ms. Berset?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. All right, thank you, Jake, for agreeing to continue in that role. So we'll move on to board committees and you were all polled as far as your areas of interest and and it's really worked out pretty well. We target two to three members on a committee. Any, in excess of three would constitute a board meeting, so that's the maximum we can have on a committee. We'll begin with the finance committee and we have four people who expressed interest, I think, in looking at this. Steve, would you be willing to serve as an alternate on the finance committee?
Yes.
Okay, so if Steve serves as an alternate, let me just reconfirm that Susan, Jake, and I would serve on that committee. Susan, would that be right?
Yes.
And Jake?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're good on that. Let's go to the policy committee. And Susan, Burgett, and Scott indicated interest. Is that still the case? You're all good with that? All right. Then the superintendent evaluation committee. On this committee, we had discussed previously that unlike the rest of the committees, the work of this committee really extends from July to June. And in doing so, we would like to keep intact from past practice, having the same group is, is part of the evaluation process, but we had five people listing it as interest, an area of interest. Would this be workable for everybody involved? Currently, we have Steve and Scott and I serving in that, on that committee. Wood and Susan and Jake indicated interest. Susan and Jake, would you be willing to be alternates until June? And then you would be, you would step onto that role and we would have Steve and Scott step into the alternate role when we start the new evaluation period. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
So we have some consistency on that. Jake, you good with that?
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, Susan? Okay. And Steve and Scott, you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then on the lamp of learning committee, Danielle and Scott indicated interest. Is there any other board member that would like to step into that committee role? If not, we can, we can operate with the two, that will work fine. Then the curriculum committee, we have Danielle, Burgett, and Jake. And do you all three continue to have interest in that? Okay. The board self-assessment, board self-assessment committee, we have four people expressed interest. I've been on this committee since the beginning, since we established it, so I would be willing to step off of that and that would have Steve, Burgett, and Scott on that. Do you wish to continue with that combination, Scott and Burgett and Steve?
That's fine with me.
Okay, great. And then the final, final committee is the bond committee and Susan and Scott indicated interest in it. Would there be any other board member that'd be interested in serving on that? Danielle? Well, Danielle and Steve?
Okay.
Either way.
Well, look, if you want to be an alternate and one serve?
I'd be more than happy to be an alternate, Jim, and.
Okay. I appreciate that, Steve, thank you. Danielle, you, we'll add you to that list.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So that completes the board committees. Then we have some other representatives for various activities that the board is a part of and we'll, we'll go through those. We needed a person to serve on the Oakland Schools Budget Committee and Jake, you served on it last year, you'd like to continue in that?
That's fine, yep.
It makes sense for Jake as a treasurer to, to be our representative there with Oakland Schools. We need a representative to serve on the Oakland County School Board Association Government Relations Committee and Burgett has expressed interest and as a board member with that group, it makes sense for her to serve in that capacity. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes, great. Then we have a member serve on the Sexuality Education Advisory Committee and Danielle has volunteered for that. And you still like to continue with that? Okay. Appointment to the Wellness Committee, Jake is agreed to continue in that role. Jake, is that good?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The representative to Head Start Policy Committee, Steve has agreed to do that. Steve, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the facility liaison, Susan and Scott have both indicated an interest. I, I don't see a conflict with having more than one person there. Would you both agree to serve in that capacity?
I think that's fine.
And, and that way, we'd even have a little coverage if there was conflict on a, on a particular day that would present itself unexpectedly, you know, that would involve you. So that would be great. So we'll have both you as liaisons here. Then our final order of business is to adopt the Board of Education meeting schedule and you all have that in front of you. Are there any questions around that? It's pretty straight away and as you all know, and Susan and Danielle may know that as we punch through the list of meetings through the year, we have plenty of adjustments as needed based on a variety of circumstances. So that's our best guesstimate at this point. Yes, Burgett?
Yeah, Jim, I have one question and that's that I see the ongoing time of 6:00 PM is the start time, which is what we've been doing since we've been remote, basically. And I'm just wondering if, if we're still going to continue that, should we go back in person? Will that remain the same?
Right, we did for that one meeting, we were back in person and in getting feedback from a variety of board members, that seems to work pretty well. And so we're going to see if we can't move to that and on a continuing basis, we've had pretty good success with that. Yes, Jake, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could split the difference and do 6:30 because for me, it's fine when I work from home, but eventually I'm going to have to go back to the office. And that's the period of time that if it was 6:30, it would work. Just, I'm going to be so rushed to get out of work at 5:00 o'clock and get to the board meeting by 6:00 and I think 6:30 would help that be more flexible.
Okay, others? Any other thoughts?
I would agree with that. I, you know, having, I, I am going to the office now, so 6:30 or even 7:00.
Okay.
6:00 is a little tough.
Okay, others?
I agree also, 6:30 or 7:00, especially my thought is on that, if people want to attend the meetings in person eventually, if we have a 6:00 o'clock meeting, that might be difficult for public participation as well.
Okay, so should we give it a try at 6:30? And see how that goes and, and evaluate that. Okay. So we, we will make those meetings 6:30 and Julie, if you'll note that change, that'd be great.
And to clarify, does that start with our next meeting, even though as we're still remote?
Yes, because we're, we'll be adopting that entire schedule.
Just making sure we're all on the same page.
That schedule looks like the one that's in our packet is not, does not cover this time. It starts in July.
That's true.
That's right, it does. I forgot that. When we changed, we used to do this in July, so we should talk about moving forward when we're going to have meetings as far as an adjustment. So let's agree to 6:30 on that one, but we need to have a conversation about coming meetings. And I don't think we do it right here. We will come back to that when we go back into our regular meeting. So we're agreeing to 6:30 starts on the calendar that begins in July. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
I, and in fact, I think we need to vote on that. So I will make the motion that we adopt the 2021-22 Board of Education meeting schedule as presented.
Do we need to?
With changes?
Does that motion need to be made?
With the 6:30 change.
I'll second that.
Right. Okay, and again, Burgett referred to that 6:30 change.
I'll say it again, thank you. Move to adopt the 2021 to 22 Board of Education meeting schedule with the change that the meetings begin at 6:30.
Okay, and then Scott?
I support that.
All right, thank you, Julie.
Ms. Berset?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. And that concludes our organizational meeting and we will move to our regular agenda. I would like to request a motion to add an item at the conclusion of our meeting to adjust the times on our meetings moving forward.
Are you asking to amend the agenda?
Yes.
I would move, I would move to amend the agenda to reflect the motion that we did, the time schedule that we've changed to 6:30 PM and to be revisited at a later date. Thank you.
Okay. So we will visit that at the conclusion of the meeting and have a vote on that. All right, so we'll move along to there is no high school leadership class report this evening, so we'll move to Mark and communication update, please.
Thanks, Jim. Basically, I know it's been a while since we've met and at the end of 2020, you know, we shared a lot about how the year went and obviously it was an unconventional year, but we were able to share some pictures and share some classes. We spent a lot of that final week of 2020 that we were in school, getting classes and kind of showing what's happening in all, I think almost every building we had participated and we popped into some Zoom classes and shared what was happening there. So it was a good opportunity for the community to see that remote learning is happening in all different forms, at different levels and people were very engaged and the teachers, it was very nice of them to let us pop in and as well. So that was really nice. A lot of what has occupied the communications time recently is the return to school. So, you know, kind of communicating with families and helping cabinet, you know, as they implement the agenda and what's going on. So sharing that with the community and we're also working on Orion Living Magazine, the spring edition will, it's still a long time away, but we've, Heidi and I have been working on it together as we, we're going to celebrate the ECC building, which you'll, you all get to see right around the time that the issue comes out. So very exciting opportunities and things that are happening, you know, within our district. Any questions?
Questions for Mark?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. And we'll move on to public participation. And Julie?
There are currently no public attendees in the meeting, so I am not aware of any requests.
Okay, thank you. So that moves us to strategic area discussion items and governance and Ben?
All right, thank you. So I just did want to mention for the public knowledge and perhaps the new board members' knowledge as well, but January is Board Appreciation Month. We have two meetings in January and we will spend some time at our next meeting to recognize the time and the commitment that you as school board members give to our community, but I did want to mention it in this meeting, so the community was aware that they would have that opportunity as well. So again, January is Board Appreciation Month. And moving on to legislative update, there have been a lot of decisions that have been made in recent weeks legislatively, but the new legislative session actually started today officially. There are a few things that I wanted to, to mention to make sure that was on everybody's radar. We've talked about this a little bit, but the Opens Meeting Act and the virtual meetings that was extended through March 31st. Currently, we have to, in the month of January, through the 31st of January, you have to do your meetings virtually. The idea behind that requirement is that, the belief is that the work that the board does can be completed remotely and that's why it's a requirement to do it in a remote format. So we have been doing that and we're getting, getting kind of good at it. I know we're anxious to get back together in person, but we do have to do it through January especially and then certainly at our next meeting, we can discuss, you know, potentially what it looks like moving forward. There was a $900 billion COVID-19 relief bill at the end of December. Really what it means for the schools is that we'll get about four times of what was received under the first CARES Act and keep in mind when you hear four times, that gets exciting for people, but recognize that that allocation is based on a Title I A allocation, which we don't get very much. So in essence, it will mean, you know, close to a half million dollars for us, which obviously we are excited to get that money, but there are districts that will get, you know, a couple million dollars, you know, based on their title funds, but just important to recognize that. We are going to take that money and help families by subsidizing our SAC program for our elementary, the before and after-school care program because of the, you know, the adjustments we've had to make to maintain the continuity of our programming and having a shortened elementary day. The SAC program actually starts around 1:00 and so that 1:00 to 3:00 time is an additional two hours that families would be burdened with and we are going to use some of those funds to subsidize that cost for families. So I did want to share that, you know, so that, that will definitely help, help families and I think it's a great use of the funds. The governor's announcements and press conferences over the last little bit have really been a lot to keep track of and have really kept us busy. Just wanted to share a couple of things that are pertinent to schools. They did provide a new document that basically replaces all the other guidance that has been provided by the state of Michigan for the safe opening of schools. The MyOSHA guidance that we've talked about before had a life of, I believe, six months, so that remains into the month of April. And then in that announcement with the governor's press conference, there was a recommendation that schools offer an in-person option by March 1st. And, and in that recommendation, there is also the understanding that that's a local decision and that was been emphasized. Obviously, each community is different. We are clearly ahead of that, you know, curve of March 1st. You know, we made the attempt to have the in-person. Previously, we will have students in person, you know, starting next week. And so we feel really good about that. What in-person means in her recommendation was at least halftime. So again, what we're providing next week really meets what that recommendation is. And the guidance that was put out, we have been utilizing, you know, all of those mitigation strategies and have considered all the things that were in that plan. So really, the plan isn't causing us to have to do a whole lot of additional work. There were a couple of areas of emphasis in that plan, I believe, that some districts are really going to have to tackle, but fortunately, we are not, but there is obviously an issue potentially with water being stagnant in buildings. If, if the buildings weren't being utilized, staff wasn't reporting and those types of things, but because we've been utilizing our buildings and staff has been working in the buildings and our custodial team has been asked to run the waters and whatnot, we, we feel comfortable with that situation, that our water will be in a good situation. We actually, last week, had, had those discussions with Wes to make sure we were good with that. And also there was some HVAC recommendations that we feel that were well ahead of as well. So we, we don't feel like there's a lot of additional work based on that recommendation, but we feel like we're in a good spot. It's been widely publicized that educators are eligible for the vaccine and they were put in the Group 1B. We have communicated out to the staff once we recognized that that was available and then also recognize the challenges of a limited number of vaccines being available across our community. One of the things that's not said publicly, but is important to understand that 75% of all the vaccines that are being given to Oakland County are being disseminated to the 65 and older group and then the remaining 25% go to the remaining 1A group that hasn't been vaccinated and all of the rest of the 1Bs, so that 25% gets split up amongst that group. So again, there's, there's a high need for the vaccine and it's going to take some time, but educators were put in the 1B, so people are excited about that. In the announcement Friday, the governor also talked about rapid antigen testing kits for districts and what that was all about was the ability to participate in a, on a voluntary basis to use these rapid antigen test kits to test the staff one time a week. I did attend a webinar today to better understand and learn about that and I've shared some notes with cabinet and will be, you know, working with, you know, CMC to see what the thinking is around these, these test kits and what people's comfort level are, but in essence, it would be, you know, testing our staff each week for COVID, using a nose swab, not the deep nose swab, but a more of a gentle swab, but more to learn on that. And then today, there was an order that came out basically replacing the order of through the 15th and this order goes through the 31st. And what I would recognize, you know, out of that order for us is that, again, we have to continue to have or have, to have virtual meetings because in-person board meetings will be prohibited through the 31st. And then also notably the contact sports that we offer as a district and all across the state. Those competitions are prohibited through the 31st. That includes the falls, excuse me, the winter sports, the fall sports are concluding. They have a pilot testing project that they're doing with MDHHS. And so the fall sports will finish using that pilot program. Winter sports competitions will be halted. Those teams can continue to train with masks and social distancing and they cannot be making contact with, with one another during those practice or conditioning times. So those are the, the big pieces. It's been a lot to keep, keep on top of. We feel like we're in a pretty good spot with it. But there certainly continues to be a number of changes to consider each month as a, as a school district and certainly our families as well. Any questions about any of those changes before I get into the COVID-19 update? Go ahead, Virga.
Hey, yeah, thank you, Ben. I just wanted to say, well, I do have one question, but I'm guessing you may not know the answer to it since you said you're going to get more information. But about the rapid antigen testing kits that will be apparently available for districts to use for testing with staff. I think I heard you say, right?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, is, would that be under the supervision then of the school nurses?
As far as, the quick answer to that would be no, not every district has school nurses. So we potentially could utilize our school nurses, yes, but there's also, there is training that the people that would administer the test would have to undergo and take. And so it wouldn't necessarily have to be the school nurse. So it, it could be, it just depends on what districts have.
Okay. But you'll be able to tell us more in the future, it sounds like.
Yeah, today was the intro, basically, just letting, letting us know basically that the, the program is out there. There's going to be another info webinar tomorrow. And so there, there'll be more and then the early adopters would start in February, February 1st, I believe, is the early adoption timeline.
Okay. And then I just want to reiterate the piece about boards having to meet remotely by requirement of the state. A lot of, one of the more common questions I get from a lot of people in town is are you guys meeting in person yet? And especially since the kids are going back in person, people want to see what we're up to. And so I just want to say that that's not an option for us. I want to, I just want to emphasize that point that it can be, when it is an option for us, our board will likely offer that opportunity for those willing to be in person.
Yes, you are correct. Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I've shared the screen, so I, I think everybody can see the extended COVID-19 update. So I'm going to move forward with that. I want to, you know, really emphasize that we appreciate, you know, the community feedback and it really helps. And we would get a, quite a variety of, you know, opinions and thoughts on, you know, not only our plan, but perhaps what it is that, you know, people think that we, you know, should be doing, you know, moving forward and those kinds of things. So we really appreciate that and we understand that with all these changes that we're having to make, that families are, you know, constantly adjusting to. And, you know, it's really been a partnership and it's been very difficult and we understand that and appreciate that and we do will continue to commit to really working hard to try to, you know, lessen the impact on, on families as we hear about the challenges that people are facing. But the, the next few slides that I'm going to show you really tell us that we're ready for our in-person instruction. You know, our numbers have been declining and sustaining, you know, for the most part, we really peaked at a, you know, scary time in December. You know, there was a lot of us that were very concerned about the numbers. And so I just wanted to quickly go over this slide. The phases in Michigan, and what I'm referring to there, there was a guidance document where there were, you know, different phases that the state of Michigan was identifying and then there were different things you were to do in those phases. That is gone. That document that was, which is, I believe, an eight-page document that was provided at last Friday's press, press conference from the governor, basically made that obsolete. That too is the same as the grade system. That, there's been a lot of discussions about that. It never really was intended for how it was used. But that system is going to be gone as well. So districts aren't to, to really recognize that moving forward. We'll continue to work with the health department and the recommendations, you know, at this point is that we are ready to go and that's why I have all these things in green. The test result timing, the, you know, the turnaround for the test results has really improved. Vaccine progress, we've talked about that. Everybody's aware that that is becoming more and more available. And then the Harvard Global Matrix and the, my Safe Start Data is all, you know, showing that things are improving and then our positive test in the district boundaries, though those numbers continue to go down. But again, these are some different data points that we use. The operating school safely, 1821, that is the new document that I'm referring to there and that we have established some communications roundtable staff to, you know, ensure that their levels of comfort. In here, the my Safe Start Data and the positive test in district boundaries and the hospital capacity. Those are also the state key metrics that they're using. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention as well. So they also, as far as some data moving forward. Again, we continue to meet with the Oakland County Health Division on a weekly basis, actually two times a week. And then the testing results, as I said, have been improved. And these are the numbers, this is right from the onset, you know, I don't have dates with it, but this is the very first number that was published. And then again, red notes that the numbers got higher or worse, meaning more positive cases. And as you can see, we had a period here of four straight weeks of, you know, improvements and not only improvements, but vast improvements, you know, we, we peaked at 114 and then made some significant drops. And we were really encouraged by that because all indications from the, from the health experts was that it was going to be a slow decline and it really was a, quite a rapid decline and we're really encouraged by that. This was last week's number that was presented on Thursday. I would anticipate the number that I get tomorrow or that's reported, I shouldn't say that I get it's reported publicly, but I would anticipate that it's still going to be in the 30s in a steady. Just from the, from the daily checks that I've been doing with the zip codes and the conversation with epidemiologists that I had Tuesday and another one today. It really sounds like they'll, they'll stay steady. Positivity rate is, you know, something that we'll continue to look at. Although that's, you know, not, not always the best indicator. Certainly with the number of people that are, you know, getting tested and why they're getting tested, that certainly makes a difference. And operationally, you know, the quarantines will be a big piece, you know, for school districts and we're no exception to that. And then there has been very, very low number of transmissions in schools, but we'll continue to monitor that, you know, with our partnerships with the health division. And then we, we really want to make sure that we're being, you know, consistent with our programming, allowing students to be, you know, in a consistent schedule. And then also, you know, not compromising, you know, our program integrity, you know, the best we can to move forward with the great programming that we have. And again, just some other meetings that we have in other areas of, of data in the community feedback has been important. Moving forward, what you see in the extended COVID plan for this month, the month of January, I did talk about this at the end of December for the sake of timing and whatnot, but we're going to continue to do the Dragon Virtual. I did want to share with you on this slide, these numbers were updated just about an hour and a half ago. So just so that everybody knows, but the enrollment for Dragon Virtual in the elementary is 18%. Middle school is 11% and high school is 16%. So that just gives you some sense as to the number of students that are going to be enrolled in the Dragon Virtual. And, and again, that's, this is different than what it was this morning when I sent that out, just so that you're aware of that. When I gave you that preview PDF, so. Right. Also, on January 19th, we're looking at the in-person and I'm going to discuss that a little bit more, but that's at all levels. And really our goals moving forward is to continue to provide a safe and healthy environment for students and staff. And then also, you know, consistent and continuous in-person learning. We, we really want to try to avoid the, the stops and starts and, you know, really frankly, for all of us, even families, it's like restarting a new school year every time we do that or coming back from, you know, a scheduled break and ultimately minimizing the context, which is really what causes the quarantines that we face so much of. In the elementary, we, we learned quite a bit. And again, you'll see in these plans that, that we're moving forward with is that the, the lunches really were an exposure issue and, you know, if you think about it, it makes sense. That's a time where people don't have on the masks. We have, you know, individual staff associates that are moving around and helping children, you know, open their, their breakfasts or lunches and all of the different things that they do during those supervision times with, with eating. And so we're really looking to lessen that time with the plans that we're moving forward. Same concept under the specials instruction, our specials teachers, when they go from classroom to classroom, the opportunity for exposure obviously increases when we have one individual in a multiple classroom. So and ultimately, we have, we have a lot of families that want in-person instruction and we want to be able to satisfy that, that need and that desire. And we believe strongly that that's the best way for the majority of our students to learn and we want to really try to emphasize that. As far as our elementary, what we're looking at is we're looking at doing effective January 19th, a four-hour and 15-minute morning session. And, and again, the focus is really going to be on the core academics. It's going to be really important that that's, that's quality time. There, there will be, you know, an opportunity in there that we will strategically do some snacks because that is a period of time that is lengthy. And I think, you know, it'd be, you know, wise for the children's brain and learning and whatnot to do a snack. So we are doing a snack. It's going to be, you know, strategic where we'll be able to, you know, keep them together as a cohort and do that in a safe manner. There, there will be the opportunity for teachers to sign up for, you know, a break or recess time. Again, and that's going to be, you know, based on the classroom teachers in the buildings and whatnot. They really want to, you know, have that flexibility to, you know, support the students, students' needs. So you can see here the timing of the four and a half, four-hour and 15-minute sessions. We have that in the presentation. Again, the early start, late start, we're going to do the grab and go lunch and breakfast. That concept simply is still giving the students, you know, nutrition, gives them the ability to get lunch as they leave and then they would get breakfast for the next day as they depart. There is a form that has been sent out that is going to our food service to allow our food service to appropriately prepare enough meals for students and whatnot, and then those are divided up by classrooms in the buildings and whatnot. But there's quite a bit of organization. We just had our discussion with our team on Tuesday and you know, the amount of time that it has taken to, you know, pull these things off to keep kids safe and provide a consistent environment has really been lengthy, well worth it. And we're really looking forward to implementing. The afternoon session, we're calling that a remote session and that's when students will get their specialist courses. And also we'll be providing some social emotional lessons independently or asynchronously. But those are in the afternoon and families can choose, you know, when, when they want to do that. They can, you know, make the choice whether their children, you know, dive into that right after eating or if they want to take a break or, you know, they want to do it in the early evening, but those would be asynchronous activities. The special education student schedules again will be based on the IEPs or the contingency learning plans. And again, I mentioned that we'll have the before and after school care at the elementary, which we know it's a major inconvenience for families to have a shortened day. And that is, you know, our attempt to help support those that have that need for the after-school, before-school care.
Ben, could we pause here and see if there are any questions for elementary?
Sure, thank you.
I had a question, Jim.
Yes, please.
As far, as far as you talked about using those grant dollars to help with that after-school care, do we know what that looks like?
I, I think I understand your question. The first two hours, the one to three time period is the time period that because we're in a shortened day is really causing families to incur additional cost. So what we were looking at is using the funds to support the first two hours of those days for those families.
Awesome. So then it would be just like they were going a normal day.
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah, we, we also just, just to be clear too, there are opportunities if there's families that have, you know, free and reduced lunch and there's issues with funding, you know, certainly we'll be able to support those families as well.
You had a question?
Yes, and it goes on the exact same lines that Scott is thinking. Can you tell me more what that means for this subsidized after-school care? The one to three timeframe and how, how does, how will, how do you anticipate that working? Is it a limited number of seats? Is it, what does that look like?
So our capacity is 36 at each school. And certainly Heidi, feel free to jump in if I've got anything wrong here, but my understanding is our capacity was 36 at each school. We've been communicating out with those families that have signed up to inform them of this subsidy. We just made this decision the other day, once we recognized the, the funds that we were getting. And so they're being told of that difference. And then also, I do believe communicating out with families that initially had signed up maybe, but then pulled back because of financial reasons, I believe they were going to be communicated with directly. And Heidi, if there's more to that, please feel free to add. I can only see Virga right now because she's talking. I can't see anybody else on the screen, so.
Okay, that, I've been shaking my head like, yes.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's all, yep, that's all correct information.
Now, do we seem to?
Can I add a little bit more to it? Please, from a, the parent's point of view, when it comes to the, you know, receiving their, their bills, so to speak, in terms of the, the program. Because it's based on what's referred to as a sessional fee, they're going to see the previous rates that were were in place a while back and then it's a behind-the-scenes subsidy, so they won't see any of that. So the, it's from a conceptual point of view, it's not an hourly rate, it's a sessional fee because you're taking a slot, so to speak.
In essence, what we're paying is the, is the first couple of hours.
Right, so the, we're using this, this funding to buy down the, the sessional fee?
Good, thank you.
So what, what if that, that this answer, the subsidy for these two hours is, solves a problem for the the parent who works hourly and doesn't need the childcare maybe after that? Does that a possible to work with families in, in various circumstances? No, I see John shaking.
No, that's what I mean by the structure of the program and, you know, Kim McLean is very well versed in this. I'm, I'm a on a scale of one to 10, I'm probably a solid six on, on, on the workings of the, or operations in terms of it comes to the fee structure, but it's a the phrase is sessional fee, because what they're really buying is a, a slot and a time associated with that slot. So if a parent only needs it for, you know, three hours versus the five hours available under the current conditions, it's the same structure. So that's why I say with the, the subsidy coming, it's buying down the overall cost of the sessional fee.
And that's because too, you know, each, each week or each month, families fill out the schedule that they're going to need for that particular timeframe, which varies. So that's another reason why it is set up that way, that some families, it's not a, what we would think of as maybe a consistent schedule. So they sign up for their, for their times and days. And I want to note, there are still spaces left currently right now in each of the schools. As Ben said, it's, you know, there are 36 slots per elementary and, you know, but currently right now, there are spots at each, each elementary school.
And how far into the future will this subsidy be able to continue?
Well, it's really going to depend on how, how long we're in this type of a format. If we get in a format where we are able to increase the instructional minutes and we have, say, a full day, you know, that, then families would be back to paying, you know, the amount that they normally would. Now, certainly we can make decisions, you know, based on the funds that we have and whatnot. We haven't talked further, you know, about that as to whether or not to continue to buy that down, as John put it. But right now, we're looking at this time being compromised because of COVID.
Hopefully, this is a transition time. Hopefully, this is a transition time.
Right.
Are there other questions? I can't see everybody, so please speak up if you have a question about the elementary.
So there's the thirty six student capacity limit. And there's been some comments about, well, obviously they're gonna need to eat, but we, but students aren't allowed to eat meals during the day. Can you comment about, you know, where students will be spaced and what type of an environment they'll be in? Because the students that go to aftercare will obviously eat because, because they haven't eaten since, you know, their snacks or breakfast. So.
Right, and we'll be dealing with, you know, schools with much less capacity when everybody leaves and we have these thirty six. Kids, as far as the designated spaces, the spaces will be as such that the students will be socially distanced. While beyond, you know, what's necessary. And we have some students at Pine Tree that will be there too, and they will have, you know, lunches. But they too will be spaced, you know, much greater. And that's really where the issue lies. If you can be at six plus feet, you know, having the mask off is, you know. Not as much of an issue or risk.
Something that can't be achieved when you have a stu-, a classroom.
Right.
Full of students.
Right.
Just, I want, I want to make sure people are aware of that, because that's something they questioned. And I figured that was the answer, but I wanted to make sure that 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 answer got out there.
And that's a fair question and and, you know, I get it. I think you just gotta look at, you know, what the facility space is gonna be when you only have. You know, thirty six kids in it. Obviously, we have a lot of spaces that we can utilize more effectively.
Any other questions on the elementary? All right, let's move on to middle school.
All right, thank you, Jim. So middle school, again, the the lessons learned. The lunchroom without masks, obviously that creates a higher risk and we were anticipating that we would have. Fewer students in the virtual program, more coming back to in person, and that's certainly what has happened. So that was definitely something that we were analyzing and considering as we made these plans. In the reduced class sizes will be addressed and that was certainly a concern. Once, once all of the students were back on the Friday, it felt much, much different than what it did the previous four days. So we're looking at a hybrid schedule for the middle school. Very similar to, you know, the high school. This, the families were sent information this week about the green and the white. You know, the green and the white days, so the families know which days are in-person days and which days are asynchronous days. So they all have that information. Again, this white and green, you know, it's just similar to the high school. Gave an example of week one and week two, what it would look like over a two-week period. Important to note that when the student's not in person, that they still will be getting activities asynchronously. We will continue to do the grab and go lunch again to avoid the unmasked times. The school day is seven thirty to twelve fifteen and students will attend all classes. And and again, we'll be serving our special education students through their IEPs and their. Contingency learning plans.
Okay, middle school questions. Any questions regarding the middle school program?
I want to clarify, because I believe Scripps uses the terminology for their two teams as green team and white team. These green days and white days do not correspond to green team and white team, correct?
You are correct, yes.
Because there was some confusion about that as well.
Yes. Yep, you are correct.
Other questions?
Actually, just have a quick question as well.
Sure, Danielle.
I believe it was the last board meeting when this was originally presented. I believe it was Scott that brought it up about how middle schoolers can get hangry after a period of time as well. So. I know we talked about it for elementary, but has there been not given to, you know, the same idea of giving kids a quick snack time? You know, just because, like I said, I know my eighth grader would get probably incredibly hangry after about three and a half hours, four hours of. Instruction.
Heidi, is, has there been any discussion? Again, I can't see you. I don't know if you're nodding your head or or not, but. Has there been any discussions about that time? I'm not aware of it, but I just want to ask.
Yes, I, after the last board meeting, I did bring that to the attention of the middle schools and. Students will be spaced out in class with this hybrid schedule that we will be able to. You know, students would like, would be able to have a snack. Again, with the hybrid schedule, we've really been able to reduce the number of kids within a classroom at a single time, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Other questions?
Heidi, excuse me, sorry. And also, Chairman, we are working with food service on having like a grab and go snack area that. Kids could go down to if they didn't bring something. We don't have all the final details on that, but we're working with. Food service on how that would work at the middle school.
Great.
Okay, so.
All right, guys, and I had a quick question as well. Yes, sorry. In the breaking up of the green days and white days, will we be able to address homes with. Multiple different last names and keep them kind of together, address any special requests from the community for. Keeping families with different names?
Sure.
Yeah, that was, yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I'll move on to the high school.
Can I tag on to that? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
With Susan's thought process there, what about the. Carryover for students that might be in middle school and from the same family with high school? Would they be able to? No, that that one's a little too much.
Yeah, it it is. It is asking. Yeah, I mean, it is very difficult. I mean, obviously the idea is to be. Back in school all day, every day for everybody, but at this point to juggle that. It was hard enough to figure out our own transportation, let alone, you know, the family transportation and student transportation with. Taken brothers and sisters, so that that we did not consider, no. And we understand that that causes some some conflicts, but we also understand that, you know, families have have planned and figured out, you know, a lot of these things. Which we appreciate. Okay, high school, again, they, their schedule remains the same. And so I just wanted to provide, provide that as a reminder. They do the grab and go lunch, nine forty to two thirty five. Daily, the learning options will meet daily. And then our special ed students, again, will will follow the IEP and the contingency learning plan. No, no, no real changes with the high school plan. Any, any questions about that at all before I move on? All right, Pine Tree, and I did talk about this a little bit, but Pine Tree will have a longer day, eight forty five to one forty five. And they'll be doing that on a daily basis. And again, their schedules are determined by their IEP team and their. Contingency learning plans. And so we are looking forward to bringing those students back on the nineteenth as well. Any questions about Pine Tree?
Is that both programs, the phases and the center program for ASD?
It's, yeah, it's the entire, it's all the programs.
The entire building?
Yes, yep. Yes. And then lastly, our early childhood, again, January nineteenth, we're looking at resuming the nineteenth and and they're really the. You know, the the brains, as John mentioned about the SAC program, really getting that rolling for us. But that too will be running effective January nineteenth. So that that was the update that I wanted to provide for the extended COVID nineteen plan. And we're really, you know, really excited about bringing our students back and hearing a lot of good from staff and and community as well, so. Any other questions?
I just had one quick question, actually, that's not really adjusted near PowerPoint, but as a middle school parent, I got the middle school. Hybrid schedule and I noticed that there wasn't any like passing time built in. Could you just address that a little bit, just so any middle school parent that, you know, may see that, say, how is my kid gonna go from class to class if there's zero passing time, so?
Sure, and and the, one of the benefits that we have with the way that the schedule is, is that the teachers and the teams will be able to. Move students strategically to lessen congregating in the halls and that. So there really will be a significant number of different times that kids will pass. So there will be the passing times. We just couldn't put that into a published schedule because it'd be all over the place. Frankly, probably create more confusion than, you know, where we currently are, so.
Right, thank you. I know, it was just something that caught my eye when I saw the middle school schedule, so thank you.
Makes a lot of sense, no problem.
Yes, Bergen.
Ben, can I ask you a question out of the document that's in our board packet? That has strikeouts and red, red words added?
That was done just some, from some feedback, just so you guys know, that is the, those were the changes that were made and so. Julie did that so that everybody could see really what needed to be recognized.
And that's the document, though, that we're actually voting on, right?
Yes, the extended COVID plan, yes.
So I have a question on. Well, of the board packets, page twenty one of that, of that particular document, it's page ten. And in the right, kind of in the middle of the page, it addresses the fact that all parents who have students in kindergarten through eighth grade will receive notification. Of how the student performed on the district benchmark screener assessment in November of twenty twenty. Could you tell me, do parents already have those results? Are those coming? And I think the board will get updated next month on benchmarks and where we stand.
Yep, Heidi, do you want to address that?
Yes, it's exactly as what you said. We are preparing for. Middle of the year data and testing that actually is beginning next week. So therefore, we will have a board presentation in February regarding student achievement and that MOI. Or middle of the year data.
Perfect, thank you.
The other questions for Ben? Ben, you have anything further here?
Jake had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jake. You're muted, Jake.
Easiest question of the night, thanks, Jake.
Still muted.
So while he's figuring that out, do you, was the markups helpful for you or would you prefer not to have the markings?
No, they were very helpful, at least speaking for myself. Thank you, Mr. Kirby, very.
Because a lot of the document remains the same. It's really the instructional delivery sections that we adjust.
Yeah, it was helpful to have that.
All right, Jake, I can't buy you any more time.
I work on that. All right, anything else, Ben?
I don't believe so. I I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So we'll move on to the policy committee report. And we have a second reading this evening.
Yeah, Jake, Jake's usually covers this.
Right.
So I get to cover Jake. So the first one in your packet is. Policy zero one four four point one and it's. Pretty much revamped as a result of the federal audit that we had and you can see the changes in packet. What's new is in green. Sorry about that. And what's crossed out is being eliminated. This is the second reading. I realized we have two new members on this tonight. It's basically saying we're not getting compensated. For our work on the board. It's pretty straightforward. So if anybody has any questions or comments. Okay.
Senator Danielle, no questions. Okay, thank you.
The second one is, I'm looking for the number. Eight four five zero point zero five, emergency temporary telecommuting policy. I think it's pretty straightforward. Everything in it is new and it's. The key to this one is it's temporary. And if you have any questions, Ben will take them.
Right. Okay, questions? Pretty straight away, we've already discussed these and we'll take action later in the meeting on these. And we'll move on to student achievement. Heidi. Please.
Okay, in addition to the extended COVID learning plan, there is also. A plan that we have to report or a, a, I guess, document that we have to fill out for the state. Regarding the training on delivery and access for our virtual content. And so just so that everybody is aware that that information is posted on our website on the transparency page. So this report shows all the PD that teachers have been provided along with parents and students. Since school began in August and it goes until January fifteenth and we'll continue to add to that. And then in regards to attendance, as you are well aware, and I reported on several times. We continue to track our attendance for our remote learning and I'm very happy. With our participation. At the elementary level, we are in attendance from mid to upper ninety percent. For students attending live sessions. And then for our middle school, mid eighty percent to upper ninety percent again for live sessions. And then our high school, we do a little bit differently just because of the scheduling there, but the average attendance from December first. Through December eighteenth was ninety nine percent. So again. We are extremely thrilled with our participation in our remote learning. We do continue to track that data. And that data is also on the website. Parent University events, we do continue to host them. There were actually one yesterday, Building a Culture of Literacy at Home for Parents for students in grades six through eight. If you happen to miss that opportunity, we are recording them and they are on YouTube. Tomorrow night, there is another Parent University Strategies to Support Reluctant Writers for Parents of Students. In grades K through two. And again, if if you can't attend, we are taping those and. They can be watched at parents' convenience. So we are happy about that. And we are actually tracking when we put the recordings on YouTube. We can track to see how many parents are actually watching these videos that we're putting on through Parent University. And we are happy to report that that they are being watched on YouTube, so. I think this is one of those silver linings that have come from the pandemic. That we will carry on in the future, that it's, it's, makes total sense. To record them so that parents can ax them, access these informational evenings at any point in time. And whenever, you know, several times if they so choose, so. We, we continue to be happy with our participation. Martin Luther King Day is coming up, January eighteenth, and we have many activities planned that day. There will be a staff professional development. Staff will be participating. We're actually joining Rochester Schools for a live guest speaker, so we're excited about that remotely. This day was very interesting to plan because obviously we have to do everything remote. It it kind of is a bummer, because this is the one day of the year. That all of our district has professional development and so it is kind, it is not kind of, it is a bummer that we all cannot come together, but. Regardless, we still get to participate in some great opportunities for learning and as I said, we'll be. Joining Rochester Schools to hear Dr. Eddie Moore. And that particular individual will be speaking on cultural diversity. Michelle Kuratin, our Diversity and Equity Coordinator, has really been working hard on this day along with. Each of our building committees. So we do have several events for the community and this information has gone out. From buildings. For our elementary students, they can pick up an MLK bag. This is a first come, first served basis. But you can pick them up at each of the elementary schools and there are. Activities within that bag that students can do at home. So I encourage you to. Go to each of your schools and make sure that you pick up that activity bag. All students can also participate in contests and that information has been going out. All students can also participate in contests and that information has been going out, in fact, before the holiday break. And we have had great participation with the entry into each of these contests. So I was a little worried about how maybe our participation would be with this being remote. However, it has been great. I think part of that may have been that we did strategically try to get it out before break and encouraged that that would be a nice activity to do during break. So we're excited about that. In addition, there have been several service learning opportunities surrounding the MLK Day, of course, appropriate for COVID. But we have had students participating in those activities as well. And then at four o'clock on MLK Day, we will be having a community event where we will be presenting students who participated in the contest will be announcing our winners. So information, as I said, has gone out on that. We encourage our families to take, to take advantage of that and we look forward to that day. Ben spoke a little bit regarding our Dragon Virtual this last week. Dragon Virtual students had to recommit to the program. He did show you the percentages. I do have the raw numbers. And at the middle level, we originally had 333 students. And now we have 239. So again, Ben had reported that that's about 11%. So we had a drop of 94 students for this next semester. At the high school, we originally had 349 for the first semester. We now have 262, which was a drop of 87, which again, is approximately 16% of the high school population. And then as Ben shared, the elementary, 493, which is roughly 18%. And remember, the elementary was a commitment for the year. So we are happy with those numbers and anticipated that that was about the range that we would see. So we are ready to start second semester. In addition, plans for Dragon Virtual are underway for what that program will be looking like in the fall. And so surveys have gone out to our families. And that includes our families, our students and teachers, that we will be gathering information as we work to prepare for the fall program. So we are excited about that and more information will be coming soon regarding that. Okay, kindergarten information night. This is the time of year where we already start preparing for fall of 2021. So everybody, please make sure that you are checking your emails, checking the website. Because we have a lot of things coming up for this spring to prepare for fall. But kindergarten information night will occur on March 15th. We will be operating in a remote format. Each elementary will be presenting a short video about their school and kindergarten. And again, parents will access this on the district webpage. And so there will also be a live and recorded question and answer session for each school. And that will take place on that evening from 6:30 to 7:30. Again, all of this information will be coming to parents, but this is kind of a sneak preview and it will be, of course, posted on our website.
Heidi, it is currently on the front page of our website. There's a button you can find out the information.
Perfect. Thanks, Mark. You're always on top of it. And then registration, there's information on that as well, will take place at each elementary school this year. And so that is Thursday, March 23rd. And then anybody enrolling after that date will go through our central enrollment office. So already preparing for kindergarten. And then eighth grade welcome night for the high school, for students going to the high school next year. That will look a little bit different this year as well. Prior to February 9th, middle schools will be receiving information regarding scheduling. Each of the high school counselors will be joining our eighth grade classes remotely, explaining what offerings we have at the high school. And that will occur on February 9th and 10th. And again, parents will be receiving information shortly for this. This is kind of a sneak preview. And then on Wednesday, February 10th, so after the students get their information, information then will be posted on our website, what we would typically do for our welcome night. So we're doing a PowerPoint with a voiceover that parents will be able to go to. It will reiterate a lot of the information that was shared with students the two previous days where counselors will meet with each of the eighth grade classes. And then Friday, February 19th is the deadline for the eighth graders to return their scheduling sheets. Once those scheduling sheets are returned, typically what would happen is the counselors would come back to the middle schools and eat, eat, meet with each individual eighth grader to review their selection sheets. Of course, we can't do that in person at this point in time. So it is being planned that counselors will meet virtually with each of the eighth grade students to review their scheduling selections. I think. I think that's it regarding that. And then.
Heidi?
Yeah?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think I missed what you said regarding the Martin Luther King Day community event regarding the fact that there's going to be an announcement for the contest winners. And how do people link to that?
That, that information is being sent out. A link will be sent out where they can join essentially a Zoom.
Okay.
That information went out today, right, Mark?
Actually, on our website currently, if people go to lakeorianschools.org/MLKday, all of the different events throughout the day are posted there, including the Zoom link. The Zoom information is currently on the page. So if people go to that, again, lakeorianschools.org/MLKday and they can find that information and we will be sharing it with the community again, our weekly Friday email that describes it in on social media.
Thank you.
All right. And then we are starting initial planning for our summer school. Summer school this year, we are hoping to broaden our services in light of everything that has occurred this past year. So more information will be coming. But we will be offering an elementary, middle and high school summer school. And like I said, more information will be coming soon, but I want to get the word out to families that we will be offering a summer school. And our intention is to do in person. It will not be remote. We think that by that time, of course, we will be in person. But we will make sure that the numbers are such that we will be able to conduct that summer school in person. And we feel that that is, we really need some time to, you know, support our students, those that maybe missed a few things during this year. And so it will be, for all intents and purposes, in person. And I think that is it. As Ben said, we're looking forward to January 19th. We've been out to the buildings. Everybody is excited to once again have students back and we're ready to go.
Good. Anything to share with us on the bond this evening?
Yes. All right. So switching over to bond.
Can I, can I stop? Can we ask a couple, can we ask any questions of that update before? Okay. I, I had a couple of questions. Kindergarten, you have the information nights and this, this may go over towards Rick more than you. But are we expecting, what will happen for students who didn't enroll in kindergarten this year? Who were traditional five-year-olds that are now turning six by September 1st or December 1st is the case maybe? Are we going to be looking to put those students into first grade or, or back into kindergarten? Or are we going to assess them?
No, the original plan would be, and most parents, when they chose to make that decision, were thinking that the kid would start kindergarten next year. So they essentially were, were waiting a year.
So we could have a larger kindergarten class coming in next fall. Those students won't necessarily move up to first grade? Okay. And then the other question was with the roughly 25%, 30% of the Dragon Virtual students choosing to, to come back. I'm assuming that those 80 students that transitioned at the high school are coming to in person at the high school, that, that they're not going elsewhere. But then I found myself, I'm making an assumption. Have we done a survey to, to, to find out why specifically the families that did not choose to re-up with Dragon Virtual chose to came back, come back in person? And would that provide us any insights for developing the program for the future?
We have not done yet, that yet, a comparison of, of, you know, if they have gone elsewhere. We will be looking at that, but for most intents and purposes, the students who have chosen to come back are coming back in person to us. In fact, we're also finding that this week I had notification that we have had several families that went to private for a period of time are now coming back. So it's already starting to happen that families are starting to come back.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
The questions for Heidi before she moves to the bond? Okay, I think we got it covered.
Okay. Yes, for Orion Oaks and Carpenter, we had a bond meeting today. We're down to the very few things on a punch list. So I'm considering those projects complete, at least for reporting purposes. Yes. And so Orion Oaks and Carpenter are set. Weber, we continue to work outside to build the new wing. So you'll see that we're plugging away there and are happy with the progress. This week, we're starting to have moving meetings with preparation as to when we get closer to the end of the school year. We will need staff to pack up because of all of the work that will be done to finish Weber. And so we're already starting to look at moving plans and how that will occur. The Early Childhood Center continues to make great progress. The Clarkson entrance was opened actually today. So that's good news on that campus. That will help the flow of traffic. So I did let Mr. Tollerton know and he was very excited about that just in time for January 19th. And then we continue working on the furnishings for that building. So we're plugging away on that. They too have had a moving meeting. So working out those details and making sure that, you know, staff is going to receive boxes and what the expectation is there. And then, as you are well aware, we're really excited for March 10th, when we will be able to give you a tour of that building. It is awesome. And it will be opening and ready fall 2021. So we're taking students. And then Stadium in Paint Creek, the design committees are done with their initial planning of the entrances for both of those buildings. And so we are just waiting to start construction in the spring for those. Design team committees for Scripps and Blanche Sims have been established. And these committees will more than likely start to meet near the end of January. So as you know, Blanche Sims is going to be a whole big project or rebuild a new elementary. So we're excited about that. And then Scripps will, we will be working on redesigning the main entrance and the office. And then furniture, a lot is happening right now in the world of furniture. The elementary, we are finalizing that package. You will soon be seeing that coming to you. So we are, we're almost there. A few things to tighten up regarding that. And then I will be sure to have a presentation for you regarding what our pilot team chose for the elementary furniture packages. They're very excited about that. And that will be implementation for fall 2021. So in the fall, every elementary except for Blanche Sims at this, no, that, that, yeah, at this point in time will be receiving new furniture. And then secondary pilot, we received some furniture during the break as planned, and then there were some delays. We are hoping that all of the furniture will be in by this Friday so that by January 19th, some of our secondary students will be coming into new classroom furniture. And I have heard that a few of our secondary pilot teachers have given some sneak previews to students and they're excited to come in and test out the furniture. So we're about ready to kick off our secondary pilot. Technology, smart boards and audio enhancement are ready to go in during the summer. High School, Weber and Paint Creek will be receiving those. And then Stadium, the following summer, and Blanche Sims, of course, when it opens in 2023. So a lot happening this summer regarding technology as well. I think that's it regarding the bond.
Okay, questions for Heidi regarding the bond and multitude of activities? Yes, Danielle?
I just have a quick question on why Blanche Sims wouldn't receive the furniture. I understand that wanted to hang up the smart boards because we're just going to have to transfer them to a new building. But I'm just curious as to why, you know, why, why couldn't they get the furniture, you know, at this juncture?
Yeah, and I believe I misspoke. I think they are getting furniture.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Steve, did you have a question?
Oh, good, Jim. Thanks.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Heidi. Lot of, lot of good things going on. So we'll move on to human resources and Rick.
Yes, thank you, Jim. I have before you tonight a recommendation for hire for two individuals, both in our special ed department. We have Megan Wander, Special Education at Oakview. You'll see from her resume, she just finished up her student teaching with us here in Lake Orion. So we're excited to have her. And then we also have Alina Bacalay, Bacalilia. It's a, a tough one, but she will be working as a speech pathologist with us. And she has just recently finished up her clinicals for her national certification. And we look forward to having her on board as well.
Great. We're looking forward to have my, having both of them on board. That's great. Thank you. So we'll move on to finance and John?
Okay, up tonight for a second reading and approval is our general fund budget amendment one. And for the benefit of our new board members, when budgets, budgets adoption come through the board, follow a two reading process. So this will be the second reading approval cycle for this amendment. And just as a reminder, from a background of where this amendment is really being constructed from. So if you recall the environment from back in June and, in 2020, with what was all going on in terms of what was known and not known about the school aid fund, what the eventual projected foundation allowance cut was being looked at at that point was in excess of $600 per pupil. As we know, it landed at the $175 pupil level. So from the perspective of the amendment that's before the board, just as a little bit more background and reminder to what the drivers are, the changes. When we adopted the budget, the fiscal year 21 budget, we were working under the assumption that we had a $600 per pupil cut. So essentially we had to cut $5 million out of the budget. So there were a lot of changes to the adopted budget. So this amendment, amendment one, basically reverses the vast majority of those based upon how things actually landed in terms of this year's particularly, particularly related to the release of CARES funding from the state and those kinds of things. So, so from a background point of view, that takes us into some specific highlight perspectives with the general fund itself. The new budget amount or requested budget amount is $86,969,798. It's an increase of $7.7 million over the adopted budget. And the big drivers there are about 250,000 associated with local property taxes. And then roughly 3.8 million in increase in state aid funding. And that's really a piece that's tied to the recognition or the reestablishment of the actual foundation allowance we received for this fiscal year versus what was expected when the adopted budget came through. the, uh, recognition or the re-establishment of the actual foundation allowance we receive for this fiscal year versus what was expected when the adopted budget came through. And then another, about another three million or so, maybe a little, a little bit more than that, three point, uh, what do we have here for the federal money, three point eight million? Is, is being recognized in this amendment that's associated with the CARES Acts and the different sources in those fundings coming through into the budget. Uh, the final expenditure budget, the expenditure side of the ledger, so to speak, is eighty-five million four hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and ninety-two. That contains a net increase of six point two million from the adopted budget. Major items driving the net overall, overall expenditure and, in, in terms of expenditure changes include, um, line items. Literally, um, the vast majority of many line items within the actual, uh, budget structure itself has changed. So, uh, particularly associated with, um, with the reversal of different programs, as I mentioned earlier about, because we're, we did not need to reduce to get down to a balanced budget. So these, on the expenditure side, there's a whole lot of, a restatement as well. Um, and then from an overall operating surplus, the surplus associated with the amendment one budget, one million five hundred and nine thousand five hundred and six dollars. That's up about just under one point five million from the adopted budget. Um, the funding behind the surplus, um, is to take a step back to June, that actual one point, or excuse me, hundred and seventy-five dollar per pupil reduction that the state took from the district in August of this twenty-twenty and impacting the fiscal year twenty. Within the actual CARES release money, there was targeted funding to replace that. The state's real issue was a timing issue between our fiscal year as a school district's ending and the fiscal year for the state ending. They don't sync up. So, um, in one year, that's why we had to recognize a reduction and of the one point, roughly one point five million in foundation. And the next year, they passed it back with the, with the CARES, that piece of the CARES Act funding. So that's basically fixing what they took from our, our fund balance as of the adopted budget driven by the final set up or the final reductions taken at the state level in June of twenty, or excuse me, August of twenty twenty. Uh, several other funds too were touched on. Those are basically, um, brought current to where the state they are. The Community Service Fund and the Food Service Fund under COVID world are probably the most stressed funds. They are both driven by fee and tuition-driven programming. So the, the Food Service Fund does have the benefit of, um, tapping into some federal money via the state for, um, meal reimbursement process. So it should, uh, chug along and survive, um, survives probably the right word. Our Community Service Fund, which includes the early childhood programming and enrichment programming, that one's in trouble, uh, from a funding perspective. We're keeping a tight, close eye on that. It's running down to the red lines and, um, with a little bit of luck and, um, a little bit of, uh, timing in terms of where the rest of the school year works out. We can get some revenues coming back in, uh, ye, some of the talk, the sack conversation we just had and that kind of thing, so that, that program can, uh, we can minimize the damage, so to speak. Again, I do want to reiterate, particularly associated with the early childhood program, with the new center opening in the fall of twenty-one, we have absolutely now, no doubt, every confidence in that program springing right back to where it was a year ago and well beyond very quickly. It's really just a matter of getting through the balance of the school year, uh, for the, for the cost, um, issues associated with the program. I would be more than happy to take any questions.
Okay, I know Susan and Danielle, uh, I'd start with you if you have any questions, because we have been, had a round of questions, and then we'll go back to other board members. Are there anything specific? I, I know Jake, you had a question.
Yeah, that's sort of a specific question, John, so hope it doesn't put you on the spot. Ben talked about, um, using federal money in, in the SAC. We, we discussed that as a subsidy. In the budget amendment, it shows eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars called out in the, in the Community Services Fund as CARES Act. Does it, does that happen to be that money? Or would this, this would be in addition to that?
This is additional on top of that.
Okay, thank you. Put you on the spot, but you can still answer.
That, 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 what's in there now recognized some funny net came specifically associated with that program to date, based on the date of the current amendment process.
Okay, Bergen?
Yes, thank you. And, um, John, I'm looking at the food service, um, budget, and I just have a few questions that I hope are easy to answer. Um, what, I know this program has just been in and out and upside down through the year with, with what's been going on. And they've done, the ladies that are working have done a phenomenal job in providing the meals, um, to go. Um, I've seen them in action. I've worked with them, and I appreciate all they're doing. Having said that, I know that we have several of them that are laid off. As we transition back to in-person and with what's going on in the buildings with grab and go, um, meals and breakfast and lunch, um, are, are we, are we utilizing that team better? And how is that offset for how we normally function since everything that is coming in through these kinds of meals is, I believe, still federal grants?
Well, it's, it's driven by the federal CARES Act funding, the, uh, that's ultimately is through the federal CARES Act funding. Um, from our perspective and the state perspective, it's through the, an extension of what's known as the summer feeding program. That's where the meal reimbursement piece comes in. Um, so when you go all the way, trace it all the way back, it ends up at the federal, uh, grant money associated with different CARES programs and support money. Um, regarding staffing, um, we have notified from a, from a starting point for next week. Monica's done a great job in identifying, bringing back personnel. If I remember right, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Rick, um, this Friday, I believe we've got people coming back on, online to, um, get up to the buildings and check things out and get, get moving in that format. Um, I do not believe it's a total recall, we, in terms of staffing. Unfortunately, um, as we move deeper into the school year and hopefully closer to, you know, theoretically in three months, we might be back to our, you know, normal operating hours, which would, which would drive a full recall and those kinds of things.
I see. So, um, for food service, which we have been most fortunate to have, um, this department be self-sustaining and then some, right? So, um, what I want to hear you say is they're gonna be okay.
They'll be okay. I mean, it'll take a while to, unfortunately, with the Food Service Fund, uh, I'll give you the quick, long, to show the story of the Food Service Fund. For the last several years, the state has been, um, sending us, um, pretty stern letters, for lack of a better description, saying, your fund balance is too high, you know, use it up. They've got their metrics and how they achieve that conclusion. So what we did with our, our oversized fund balance, we did some renovations of the high school kitchen. That was the year and finished up literally just before the, um, the summer, the school year that when we got shut down this past March. That used up half the fund balance. So then brings COVID, so there's a time, there's just some bad luck relative to that, but they will be fine going, um, going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions for John on, uh, the amendments? Okay, I think we're good, John.
Yeah, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, referred to as the consolidated bid award. The big projects here are the, um, the work being done at Stadium, at, um, Paint Creek and the playground work over at Early Childhood. It's, it follows the same format as that we did, uh, this past year, actually a little more than that, when, uh, bigger projects at Carpenter and, um, and Weber came online. In terms of that project, the, uh, the scope consists, really consists of secure entries and interior renovations at the, at the two elementaries plus playground work over at Early Childhood. We do have some recommendations that I will touch, touch base on. There, this page is, begins pages, uh, fifty-three in the board packet. That's the actual, what we refer to as a board action request form. So in terms of the programming itself, uh, that's up for approval. Yeah, it's Paint Creek, the total project cost that are being requested to authorize is one million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and forty-one thousand. That includes, uh, funding for allowances and contingency. At the stadium project site, the total request is one million nine seventy-eight six hundred and fifty thousand, and that also includes allowances and contingency requests. And then the, uh, Early Childhood Playground Equipment and Installation piece of that project totals one eighty-one, five thirty-four, again with some allowances and contingency funding. So in terms of the total bid award, uh, we are looking at, um, in terms of funding it through all, all, it's all fully funded through the secure, the, uh, the series one bond twenty nineteen resources. Uh, the grand total contract with approval amounts, three million, three million twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars with, um, request for allocating contingency and allowances in the amount for all three of those sub projects of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand and forty-seven dollars for a grand total of three million five hundred and fifty-two dollars and, excuse me, three million five hundred and fifty-two thousand and twenty-five dollars.
All right, questions for John? I did have one question, John. Uh, how far, uh, percentage-wise, just to ballpark, would you say we are into the, uh, series one?
In terms of projects or terms of spending?
In terms of spending.
Um, I would put it in the neighborhood of reaching fifty percent.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit more than that. Blanche Sims is the, uh, the remaining big ticket, this big project, and that's, remember rates in the neighborhood of eighteen million.
Right.
Um, so we're probably, um, sixty, sixty-plus percent.
Okay, thank you.
There's always a lag time to associate when, you know, work's done versus payment and that kind of.
Sure, sure. All right, other, any questions? If not, we will, uh, we'll move ahead. John?
One more bid for the Weber School, uh, Weber Elementary. It's the investment, excuse me, it's the asbestos abatement project. Um, so this, the background scope for this bid request is, uh, really is focused on asbestos abatement at the identified areas located at Weber Elementary. Um, just a little background, when, when you're dealing with asbestos, and especially in public school world, um, we do under the asbestos, excuse me, Avastid Hazard Emergency Response Act, that's also known as the HARA. From the, that was passed in the eighties, uh, all districts at that point were required to do full-scale inspections of all their facilities and document it to get a good handle on, um, asbestos issues within existing facilities. We were no different, and that basically started the clock ticking and establish a, in the schedule of knowns, uh, known asbestos-related issues within the district. So that's your starting point when you do any renovations going forward. So when, when we go into a, um, facility and do renovation work, we already know of identified asbestos issues. Um, if it's not a case where we're gonna deal with it through some construction work, on an annual basis, the district does re-inspections to make sure everything is undisturbed, so to speak, and the, the nomenclature around asbestos is disturbed and undisturbed. So through the inspection process, if the previously identified site appears to be disturbed, that will trigger a special, a specific project to do abatement at that zone or at that site. If it's construction-related like these cases, um, and we know the existing asbestos, we'll go in knowing that information. We do a re-inspection on site just in case, you never know, just in case you miss something. And that's what this case is in terms of, um, Weber. It's, it's similar to what we did at Carpenter not too long ago. Um, from a timeline point of view, I would say that was six or eight months ago, but in COVID world, my timelines are getting, uh, a little more cloudy as we, as we move through. Um, so the specifics of the actual bid award, it's a fifty-two thousand dollar bid award to the firm under the title of... Pardon my page flipping. Uh, the firm that we're awarding to is a Global Green Service Group. We've concluded that decision based upon, uh, bid work managed by Arch Environmental Group. That it's our environmental group that we use as a district. Um, there's data and statistics and the information in the packet associated with the number of bids and the selection of them. Um, in terms of the actual pricing, the fifty-two thousand five thirty-five contract award amount is a base bid. Um, emphasis on the word base bid. When you are dealing with asbestos in existing buildings and remember Weber's in excess of sixty-five years old, the best of inspections will get you there. You really don't know until you tear up the tile or tear into the wall to see what surprises also lurk along with it. So when you see abatements and these kinds of things, particularly in some of the older buildings, and particularly abatement projects, there's always a heavy contingency tied to it. Um, ideally, you don't need to spend it in any contingency or allowance for that matter that's not spent flows back into the bond project. So in this case, it's a request for a bid award of fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars with a thirty thousand dollar, um, allowance, or actually, this is a contingency authorization of thirty thousand dollars for a total bid award and, and authorization of eighty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. So in the context of that one, any questions?
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim.
Uh, questions on the asbestos and the, the abatement process? Yes, Bergen?
Yes, so, um, the original was on the twenty-first, and then it was backed up on the twenty-second with the request for the additional contingency dollars. So I think I just heard you say that that's just an in-case, that that is, was that, I don't want to say the word oversight, but I can't think of a different word to use for this now on the, on the part of the bidder in their original.
Well, it's, it's contingency. The, the actual bidder's award is fifty-two thousand five thirty-five, but if you noticed on the actual in, in, and then in the, uh, tabulations, um, documentation in the board packet, you see the different columns speaking to base bid, uh, linear feet, linear footwork, man-hour rate. Those are all in there knowing, especially again with the abatement type issues. And from the history of, uh, from, of dealing with older buildings and abatement issues, they come in and give their best shot at their base bid after they go and do their, you know, their due, due diligence, excuse me. Um, too much caffeine today. Um, so, but based on history on these projects, we tend to attach a very large contingency. So this is roughly in excess of fifty thousand contingency on this issue.
Basically put in, John, the totality of the whole thing, correct?
Correct. So we may not use it, but history tells us, the experience tells us, there's a high likelihood that some of it will be used, if not all of it.
But it's a not-to-exceed.
Right, it's, uh, it's a not-to-exceed amount.
Okay.
So when that bid came in and, and they added to that, did that all, did that alter the status of the original? But I'm not, this isn't my specialty, so I'm just asking because I literally don't know.
No, so let me clarify. The, the environmental group, Archer Environmental Group's letter dated twenty-one, December twenty-one, that was the recommendation based upon their bid process and analysis to, to advise selection of, um, Global Green Service Group. The letter dated December twenty-two is additional advice, basically along the lines of a synopsis of what I was just explaining about, because it's an abatement project, this is, we recommend putting this much aside for potential contingency use.
Understood. I guess my question's more about the bid process and having that come after the fact that maybe the day after you accepted there or however that process went. So, so I guess what I'm, literally my bottom line in asking is, did that affect that bid process and the fact that they earned the bid?
No.
That, thank you.
When, when, yeah, no.
Okay. All right, good question. Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Jake?
Yeah, you mentioned it, John. This, this is part of the bond project, and the, the follow-up to that is, uh, was this considered when we did the original cost estimating of these older buildings that there would be asbestos abatement? Or is this, i- is this a cost overrun of something you didn't originally anticipate?
No, like I mentioned, we know in the buildings, like between this and Carpenter, we know there's existing issues there. Again, it's the, you know, they're undisturbed issues that have been identified, and we track them. So it's, it's addressed when it comes to actually putting together total bond programming.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, John, anything further?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to facilities liaison report, Scott.
There's no report.
All right, thank you, sir. And that moves us to action items. And, um, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move that we approved the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the December bills in the amount of sixteen million one hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Approved minutes from the December sixteenth regular and the December fourteenth twenty twenty finance committee meetings. Also approving the Head Start Coordinator's report.
Thank you. Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. Julie, please?
Ms. Bressa?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Uh, may have a motion to approve the extended COVID-nineteen learning plan.
A move that we approve. A move that we approve the Lake Warren Community Schools Extended COVID nineteen Learning Plan Update for January. In compliance with Public Act one four nine, section ninety eight A, as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Thank you. The extended COVID nineteen learning plan is approved. May have a motion. To approve the policy revisions.
A move that we approve the proposed revisions for board bylaws zero one four four point one and policy eight four five zero point zero five as presented.
All right, is there support?
I second that.
All right. Julie, please.
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. The policy revisions are approved. They have a motion to approve the certified new hires.
A move that we approve the two certified new hires as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Our new hires are approved and we welcome our two newest team members. They have a motion to adopt the. FY twenty twenty one First Amendment Resolution, the General Appropriation Act.
A move that we adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty one First Amendment Resolution as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. The first budget amendment of the year has been approved. They have a motion to authorize bid award for Stadium Drive, Paint Creek and Early Childhood Center projects.
A move that we authorize administration to execute contracts in the amount of three million twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars. And allocate contingency and allowances in the amount of five hundred and thirty nine thousand and forty seven dollars. For a total recommendation of three million five hundred and fifty two thousand and twenty five dollars as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. The bid award for Stadium Drive, Paint Creek and Early Childhood Center project is approved. They have a motion to authorize bid award for Weber asbestos abatement project.
A move that we authorize administration to execute a contract with Global Green Service Group not to exceed fifty five two thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars. With the contingency authorization of thirty thousand dollars for a pure curment commitment total of eighty two thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie?
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes, the bid award for Weber asbestos abatement project is approved. And I call on Bergen for a final action item related to our change in. Our times on our. Upcoming meetings.
Move that.
One you you read before, just for the adjustment.
I move that we approve a schedule change to our meetings at for a start time of six thirty.
All right, is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. Julie?
Can I just verify before we actually go to roll call that you're referring to the remainder of the meetings for this school year?
Through June.
Okay.
This year.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. The change to our starting time for meetings through June of this year has been approved. All right, so we're on to recap and next steps. We'll start with Ben.
As far as a recap, I just want to mention the district showing a lot of progress with the bond projects as well as our instructional plan during the pandemic. And as far as next steps, we'll be looking to publish those time changes for the start times. So. Other than that, I didn't identify any additional items.
Thank you. Closing comments. Can we start with you, Rick?
Just one, if I could, we we have asked our staff a week ago to start inputting. Daily screenings and clear to go to help us assess. Quarantines and so forth, and we started that process this week with students. Hoping to have a an idea of the number of students who may not be able to return in person because of quarantine situation. So we just asked those parents that are at home to. Continue to do the clear to go with their students now, even though they're not. Currently attending in person, but we're hoping to get an assessment of where we're at with the number of quarantines across the district. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Rick. Heidi?
Welcome to Susan and Danielle. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. John?
Welcome to our new board members and welcome to our new dragon teachers.
All right, thank you. Ben?
Yeah, also welcome Susan and Danielle, really working, looking forward to working with this team, new Board of Education. And also excited about next week and really anticipate our progress moving forward as a district and community. And certainly thanks to the staff for all their awesome awesome work while in this remote setting and then also all the transitions and all the preparations that are necessary. It's very much appreciated and and also to the families for all your patience and understanding as we navigate this pandemic. We can, we couldn't do it without you and your partnership and and that's really appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Steve?
Happy New Year to everybody in the safe land. Looking forward to a better new year and I thank cabinet, Mr. Kirby, everybody involved, our teachers. And of course, our parents and children wish everybody the very best on the nineteenth. It's a special day. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Steve. Scott?
I'd like to welcome Susan and Danielle. Thank you for, this year was quite a bit of work for to get in that chair, as I know and Bergen knows. So thank you for. Fighting to get a volunteer position. And also welcome to the new dragon teachers. Excited to have them and excited to have them seat kids on Monday.
Thank you, Scott. Jake?
Yeah, I want to say the same things. Welcome to Danielle and Susan. It's exciting to have. A new board and and new dynamics and break new ground. Welcome to Megan and Alina, the new teachers. And exciting times. Again, it's almost like having another first day of school. So there's all the excitement that goes along with that in in our educational community and. And just wishing everybody the best and, you know, have patience with each other because it is like start, you know, start, starting a new school year and and we'll get through this together.
Great, thank you, Jake. Bergen?
Yes, not to sound like a broken record, but I also want to welcome our new teachers and extend a huge welcome to Susan and Danielle. I'm excited to have you on board and and join our team. It's going to be great. I am very excited about the work that Heidi and her staff have done for MLK Day on Monday, and I hope that people will participate in those opportunities online. And I'm super excited about the kids coming to building and I get that sense that there's this momentum building when I'm out about in the district. So I'm I'm excited to hear great things next week and beyond. And I just want to take a moment to remind my board that there's an opportunity for professional development with OCSBA next Wednesday night. We're going to have a speaker from MASP come in and talk about grassroots advocacy. Super pertinent to our current day. And then I asked Julie if she would send out the Plant Moran and Clark Hill. Opportunity for professional development that happens to be an outstanding opportunity, they always do a great job. And if you are available to attend that, I know it'll be real different remotely, but you won't be disappointed with that. I hope you all take a. A moment to see if you're available for those opportunities and other than that, thank you.
All right, thanks, Bergen. Susan?
So just thank you all for the warm welcome tonight. I am very excited to be a member of the board and looking forward to working with each of you. To help continue to move our district in the right direction. So looking forward to it and. Happy New Year to everyone and can't wait to get to get going here.
Thank you. Danielle?
Um, I know I'm gonna sound like a broken record too, but thank you so much for the warm welcome. Very excited to be here. I know it's been said, I have to thank our staff a thousand times over again from everybody, you know, waiting in the wings from transportation all the way on up. And I'm fortunate that I'm, I can often hear my my son's. Calls with his teachers and the energy and enthusiasm that they bring every day is just amazing to me in these crazy times. And even when things go wrong, they they do it with such grace and humor that I, we just have one of the best staff. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's it's great to see that we're going to be face to face again soon and I am. Looking forward to us expanding on that as quickly as as we are. We can possibly do that and I know it's not far off. And then on a board level, it's. It's difficult to break up a good team and we had a good team, but it's always an opportunity to bring in. New perspectives and new insights and a new energy with new board members. And I want to welcome Susan and Danielle. And also. Thank Bergen and Scott for re-upping. It's. You know what the job is and it's it's a tall order sometimes. And so again, it's it's great to see this new dynamic in place and it's going to be a great year. On that, good night and we are adjourned.